Hi, Mark.
Okay.
At first I'm taking off his agenda.
I was here at six.
Sorry, I should have been in the meeting room.
So I know they've already left, but just a, just a big thanks to Dina and the members of the board from the Chamber Board of Directors for coming out and recognizing that it looks beautiful in here. So we appreciate them taking some time out of their evening to come and celebrate with us as we break in the new council chambers. So don't.
So we're gonna let things just kind of settle for now. No reason to throw things up suddenly because in the future, we're looking at monitors in three of the locations up on the wall.
Monitors, more than that much.
Yep, yeah. So when we do that, then you'll have spaces that are filled and then you'll have to figure out what to do with the rest of it. But we're not, we're not jumping anything right now and we don't have, we don't have the pictures available and the funds to do it, so.
Work in progress still.
Yep.
But, but it does look great. I think everybody can agree. Chairs are very comfortable. No napping. Okay. All right, at this time, we'll move down to the city administrators' report.
You got an updated report at your seats. Draw your attention to the latest two items I've got in here. Five, item five is a healthcare committee. Alderman Eidman and Alderman Donovan have been on the healthcare committee the last few years, I think actually since we created it. We need to meet in March. We have one employee that we need to get nominated to be part of that committee and then sit down and talk about health insurance. They will get together, we'll talk with Legan and Insurance or a representative and Sonus Benefits, and come up with a plan for health insurance to bring back to the board, which will have to be approved by the end of April because we have to have it approved by May 1st, goes into effect June 1st. So I don't know if there's going to be any changes or not for what the rates are going to be. Standard across the, from what I've seen from other sources is an eight percent increase. Seems to be what everybody's seeing, so we may have to look at that. Maybe it'll be less. I think we've had high utilization this year, so I think that will, that will hurt us. So we'll be getting those, that group together. And then item six, Cochran Engineering received a letter from the Corps of Engineers. They are going to take responsibility for that section of the creek where we're looking at putting in that detention basin, which means they'll have certain requirements to be involved in the detention basin development. They're trying to determine what kind of oversight the Corps is going to have. And then Cochran can move forward with how the design will look and what, what the Corps is part of that will be. It's a nationwide permit, but it depends on which nationwide permit and they haven't told them what that is yet. So that's where we are with that.
So does that take their jurisdiction all the way up that, you know, I mean, that's up in there where we're talking about the basin? In my definition, it's not a creek.
Right.
It's a hitch.
There is a certain way they've, they've named them. I can't think of what the term is because I'm not familiar with it, but that, there is a, there is headwaters that can, that can come from the creek, the South Gavri Creek. That's part of that, that watershed, so they claim jurisdiction on that.
This is for the proposed detention basin. They're buying the new.
Blood school, yeah, yeah, sure is.
That's part of that Waterways Act that the EPA and Corps of Engineers tried to pass, I would guess.
Right, right. So they've got the drawing done with the expansion. They just had to have to wait for the Corps of Engineers and they need to see what type of permit they're going to be requiring before we can move forward.
More delays, more costs.
More waiting to hear from the final amendment.
Any questions on anything else?
Jim?
Just go back to your number two, McDaniels Marketing. They presented to the TAC and the TPC the marketing plans that we received that grant for. Just that I don't know if we have, we have committee or staff, again, we have committee reports?
You can, but yeah.
He was outstanding. That, and I'll let Happy also speak to it, but McDaniels came down and presented their marketing plan for the next five years for the tourism department. And that guy and his staff person did, I thought, did an excellent job. And you can just tell the passion about it and they just, I think, put a lot of effort into it. And it's, it's just a preliminary plan and it was just, I thought it was really well done and really well thought out. And so I think it's going to really help Aaron in his new role to kind of move the tourism needle quite a bit.
So the plan will also is looked at as an economic development tool. So there's a branding that's going to take place that they want to do. Well, if they're going to do that, then I don't want to redo our website, which I plan on doing the city website this year. However, they want consistency across the board with other agencies. So we'll probably hold off on our website until that, that time. But they look at it as there's a whole wheel of, of economic development that comes into play with tourism and marketing the city.
He's worked with a lot of Missouri and Illinois towns and entities. And he just, he knows all the grants that the state puts out. Just, he's got a really good flow for the opportunities that we would have and the different stages and some of the grants that we can apply for and how it will all fit in. And it was, I don't know, just really well done. So and, and, I don't, his, he does have that economic development approach. You know, I know our tourism department doesn't really, we aren't tasking that person with that mission for economic development. It just ties in really well and I guess what he explains it is they come here. We spent a lot of money to get them to come here. And if you get somebody that really enjoys their stay and likes it, it would be a good person to live here as well. And so he just kind of takes it to that next level. It's like, you know, you can also encourage them to move here, not just come here for a weekend, but to move here permanently. And so it was interesting the way he approaches that. And some of the people like Jackson in Illinois, he does Cuba, Fort Leonard Wood area. They have a big CBB out there and he works with them and a bunch of other town. The one in Iowa where the picker guy is, he works with that. There's a bunch of them. He's just a very thoughtful and well laid out, but I think it's going to really help Aaron.
So the plan goes to, back to the tourism group for their final approval and then it will, it will bring it to the board, let you see it. But they, we want to get them to give any input and then finish up the plan and then you'll, you'll have a chance to see what, what all he has involved in it.
Great. Thanks for the update, Alderman Steiger. Move to staff reports and first up tonight, we'll have Chief Crump.
Only changes on my report from what you have. The two new handheld radios for us to be digital compliant. They came in and there's six of our 12 car radios are in and they'll start the install here within about two weeks. The K-9 vehicle scheduled for upfitting April 2nd. And then the new truck arrived Friday and we're just waiting on a date for it to get outfitted. Any other question?
Thanks, chief. Then next up, we'll have Steve Wilson with Alliance Water.
Evening, everyone. As most of you know, last month was a very cold month to start out with. We went through a cold spell where we were averaging two to three main breaks a day. Guys were out there working sub-zero temperatures. One day was about 15 hours straight. Three main breaks that one day. Just wanted to thank the community for the support first. When we were out there working, we hadn't seen support like we have in a long time. We had people bringing us coffees, hot chocolates, Domino's delivered food to us while we were out there. It was, it was real nice. So, but yeah, that consumed up a lot of our time. The majority of the time during the inclement weather that we weren't snow plowing or fixing water leaks. Staff is busy doing maintenance on vehicles. Street sweeper for one, it's unwinterized, ready to go. One of the, one of the, it could joke. One of the trailers got gone through one end of the other, bearings, tires. Found an issue with the, with wiring for the trailer brakes. We addressed that as well. And straightened up some bit metal on it, so. If anybody's driven by the street department, there is, we continue to work on a couple of small offices up there. That's progressing well, I think, so. If you might have any questions.
Steve, the new hybrid and seven four by Plano. Are you, are you aware that there was some agreement to put kind of freedom around that?
No.
Very well. If there was an agreement, it would have been with Jokers. Well, I don't, I don't believe that's the case. I can't speak to it because I wasn't there. But can you follow up with maybe does, if there's something we need to manage? Okay.
Any questions? Okay, thanks, Steve.
Oh, the public hearing, yeah.
Okay, this time we'll move to public comment.
My name's Dwayne Gettiger. I live at 11458 State Route M, which is five houses just on the outside of St. Genevieve. What I'm here tonight to do is discuss the, the increasing rate in the fire tag. I myself am a farmer in an adjoining fire department. I do understand the need to raise the rates and everything. However, my fire tag is twice as much as my neighbor, which is one house down. And the explanation has always been, even back when Chief Schwint was the chief, I live within so many thousand feet of a water source, being the water tower on M Road, Bill Zora Road. Well, his explanation always has been, you're saving me money on my homeowner's insurance. But now, since you've raised your rates, you've doubled my fire tag to $200 a month or year, which is $100 more than my next door neighbor. And you're not saving me $100 on my homeowner's insurance. So I don't see where we came up with the formula that you are going to tax me or charge me more to save me money on my homeowner's. You have a very good police department in town, crime rate's low, homeowner's insurance is low. Do you charge them more for police protection? I don't think so. So my thing is, like I said, I'm a, I'm the assistant chief in Ozora. We raised our rates to $65, which is, you know, a little bit, it helps out. So I was wondering, what could we do about this? It seems extreme to me to charge me and my neighbors double when you're not really saving me any money. So that's what I'm here to discuss. You know, we're, and another thing I kind of thought of, we pay for a tag, we have no say so. We have no, where's our money going as tag holders? Do, we have no say so? We, we don't know, you know, we have to take your word for it. You, we have no aldermen because we live in the county. So, you know, where did we come with? I can see raising the rates. I'm not against that. I totally understand. But $100 in one year is excessive to me. And it seems like you're gouging me. You're saving me money on my homeowner's insurance, so why do you penalize me? You're a community. You should, you should be glad to help out your citizens, not penalize them for helping them. So that's my thing I'm here to ask about tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I know you can't have an exchange, but I'd like to make an offer to Dwayne after the meeting if you're available. Or if you have to leave, sure. I've got some, some of that explanation for your, when you get together at your convenience.
I'm more happy. I don't think there is a good explanation.
I understand.
You, it's just, you, what are you going to do? You're doubling your budget. You're saying that this fire department belongs to the city. We're just tag holders with a subscription for service. Where's our money go? Nobody can tell us because it's always been that way. Well, I don't think it should always be that way. And if you're going to want support from the community to go to a district, you're going to have a hard sale, especially for me as a chief or assistant chief in the adjoining apartment. And I'm not going to support it if we can't figure this out because how much does an average town or house in St. Jude pay for fire protection? Do they pay $200 a year, $100 a year? I don't think so. So I'm paying 200 and I don't think it's fair. So that's, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dwayne. Any other public comment at this time? Okay. This time, we will hold a public hearing. The mayor and board, and mayor and board of aldermen will conduct a public hearing to which times citizens may be heard on the proposed water sewer rates to be set by the Board of Aldermen. We will open this public hearing at 6:19.
You can talk about it when we do the board, or you can talk about it now.
Okay, if there's no, no comment or anything, yep.
Just for the public, if you're not reading, when there was the proposed rates are going to be an increase on the water rates of 2%, the sewer rates of 2% and some of the industrial customers had a 3% increase of the proposed raises on rates. That's my commentary.
Okay. Any other comments at this time? Okay. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:20. Move to tonight's consent agenda.
There's some close session minutes coming around before you open.
Okay. Believe so.
I'd like the second and second motion.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No old business to discuss tonight, so we will move on to some new business. We have an approval of a low bid from Joker's paving in the amount of $132,295 for the North Fourth Street Drainage Paving Project. Yes.
Just kind of curious why, what happened, you know, between the engineers and initial estimate of this and then a $44,000 over his initial.
His initial estimate. We discussed that. He said that's, you know, the market rate at this point, there's, you know, it's based on what he had for mobilization and earthwork and all that. Either at this time, costs have gone up or there's, you know, some other issue that we don't, we don't see. But that was, that was the low bid of three bidders that we had and everybody was pretty close together.
Do you, sorry, Mark, do you get line item detail on both the proposal and the new cost?
We do and I sent that to the engineer to review to see if there was something that looked out of whack with the low bid. And he just, he said, I, you know, said, should we not go with that, that bid? And he said, well, it seems to be market rate because you got everybody pretty close to it. So that, that would be what needs to be done, the cost of what needs to be done because we're looking at concrete, the stormwater and the asphalt.
So in your opinion, we've got two sides of that equation, so the side that's likely off is the estimate.
Yeah, possible, very possible.
I guess my question, you know, Happy, is when he, you know, when the engineer goes in and determines this estimate, I mean, how much work has he actually put into this? You know, is there any design work already done or is this just a wild guess?
No, this is already with the design work. We have plans and plans have been put out for a bid. So that's all been, all been put together, knowing what areas that we're starting and stopping, what needs to be installed.
No, I meant his initial estimate.
And that was based on the final drawings. Because I asked him for an estimate of what, what he thought the cost was going to be so we could compare with what our bids are.
So from his initial estimate to the actual bid, it changed $44,000?
No, no, this is, this is the bid estimate.
Right.
Yeah. So you're talking about the, the initial, initial investment?
Yes.
We didn't have, we didn't come up with a fee at that point because we didn't know the specifics of, of what was going to need to be replaced or repaved.
Just wondering how he comes up with that initial estimate because I, you know, $10,000 or $5,000 would be one thing, but a third of the cost of the whole project just seems in excess to me, but. You know, and I don't know if there's any way we can prepare for that or, you know, just say, oops, and accept it, I mean.
It's the worst part of that street and that's why we held off paving and just doing the overlay. So that we could attempt to it or at best to get the water to flow down to inlets at the end of that street.
We've had other projects that have come back with a $30,000 change order because it wasn't figured correctly at first, but so maybe hopefully this will eliminate that.
No guarantees, right, no guarantees because we could get hit with another. I just, you know, that just seems in excess to me and stuff that we should get a better estimate, you know, going into these projects that we can be better prepared.
It still is within our, what we budgeted this year for the street projects. So if it was outside of that, I would say we had, we had an issue, but we're within that spec, so.
Yeah, if there's anything we can do to help them get closer, I think, I hope we do that.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Did the specs change and did we go back and do more? Change the design and what they bid on was different than what the engineers estimated originally?
Again, the, we didn't have what, what Alderman Donovan's talking about. We didn't have an initial type of estimate. This is the estimate based on the drawings. Because I asked for that information so that we could send out a grid so we could compare what the numbers were when they came back. So that's the estimate I got was about 88,000 or the 87,727.
Yeah, it will.
Because what you'll, what you'll have is a motion to approve the bid, then we'll bring back a contract for you to approve at the next meeting. To approve the low bid of Joker's paving.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? We'll take us to a first reading of bill number 4606. This is an ordinance amending section 200 dot 015, chief of police appointment, term, salary and removal. Yes.
I'd like to get some clarification on paragraph eight. I may be misinterpreting that, but it seems to set a qualification for that, that can achieve a police to be a resident, let me say. And I wanted to know if that was intentional or am I misinterpreting that?
I think there are maybe a couple of issues with this, but we'll just table this and get.
Why are we, what were the changes that we were kind of, actually?
The only change to this ordinance was because there's a new requirement for the, that's set forth in paragraph C. For a new hire of a police chief, they have to complete a police training.
State statute change, so anybody hired, yeah, anybody hired after August of this last year has to go through that, so that's the really little change.
The only difference right now, we added paragraph C?
Correct.
Or are we going to?
Correct.
Well, before, am I, am I wrong? If we, if we pass this bill, do we then restrict that position after the year of seniorism?
We already had a resolution made that abolished that part of this.
That's what my concern is.
Is that still a whole water?
I thought, I thought we waived that. I don't, did we amend the ordinance? Because I was, I was going off. There must have been another ordinance. Because there's another section. The existing ordinance that I saw on the website, if it's been updated, then it's my mistake. I didn't catch that we've amended that, so. So we can table that and I can, I can change that. Apologies, I thought there was just a waiver there.
I didn't catch it. I'm sorry, Mark, in a future building, you said you would remove that.
Yeah, we, we can, we can just table it till the next meeting. We'll, we'll fix it. This isn't an emergency. The only change is if we have another chief come in, we want to have this in place so it was clear that that training program had to be, had to be completed. It was just an updating the law and my oversight if it's governed by the presidency of the party.
Motion to table or?
If you don't mind.
I have a motion to table, so.
Okay, so the motion is to table this to a future meeting and we do have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I mean, I had a whole time figuring out why that was out. So is there a way we can put a summary or something?
I just ran out of time to put a summary together and throw that.
I can't, I don't know what the original.
Yeah, so that the, I intended to have that as a second whereas in that, which mentions the chief of police appointed after August 2023. So I could, I could have spelled it out in the word details. Still need to staff it more, so.
Okay. Move on to a first reading of bill number 4607. This is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending municipal code chapter 715, user charge systems, specifically section 715 dot 040, user charge rates subsections A and B by revising the water use charges.
Happy, I had a, just a brief discussion about this and stuff, but I think as Alderman Steiger brought out, you know, this is a 2% increase. Does that reflect covering our costs, just that 2% or?
It's going to cover what we, what we take in.
Compared to what our challenges are.
That's about it. It's not looking, I'm not trying to add anything beyond that. Because we had a deficit this last year, if you check the audit.
Correct.
And that's what I'm trying to cover this year. We've been trying to do 2% each year, but we're not. We probably at this point need to do a, a user rate study and see what the rates need to be.
Because I know we faced a rating increase with Alliance also and stuff and just trying to, you know, keep this under control that we're covering our costs.
Yeah.
So.
We haven't anticipated, you know, adding another, and it would just be 3% of what their, what their total is every month. This was what we thought would, would, based on what our revenues are, this would cover whatever the increase is there.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to a first reading of bill number 4608. This is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending municipal code chapter 715, user charge systems, specifically section 715 dot 140, sewer charges and billing, subsection D by revising the sewer use charges.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We've, that wraps up our new business. Any, any discussion? Anything that anybody'd like to bring before council?
I'd like to welcome Cussey and I Gennert to the Tourism Advisory Council as well as within there. We were in the consent agenda, so they were nominated by the mayor and we just approved them, and we're happy to have them aboard on the TAC as new members.
Wonderful. Anything else? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn.